Good morning and welcome to our Commissioners Meeting. Please stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of September 7th.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We'll move into our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our County Engineer, and standing in is Gina Frimell.
Yes, Frim.
Frim. Got it. Good morning.
Good morning. The County Engineers has one resolution today determining the necessity to close Smith Road between Spencer and River Corners and the weekly permit list September 2nd through September 8th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amy Lyon Galvin is up next, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have six resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The second is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The third is cash transfers for various funds. The fourth is amending and authorizing the county's procurement policy, and what we did is add the federal procurement requirements. This will now be in a format that we can share with any grant recipients or subgrant recipients of the ARP dollars so that they can be compliant with the federal requirements. The fourth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. I think fifth, yep, and then sixth, and final for today is approving claims for the week in the amount of $861,753.2.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director, and standing in is Nicole Lee. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning. I have one resolution. I have one new hire at building, one rate increase in planning, a resignation in maintenance, and one retirement in maintenance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Next up, Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning.
Good morning, Jeremy.
I have one resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing the sanitary engineer to execute a contract with Conos Scales and Systems to replace the existing commercial scales at the solid waste district.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Jeremy, do you have a timeframe for when this will be done?
I believe March is the lead time on the scales.
Okay. So how long will it take?
To install the scales, they're saying over the weekend.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's really awesome.
So it really shouldn't impact traffic too much?
Traffic at all. No, that's pretty nice that they...
And these are the commercial scales?
That is correct.
So by the time these are ready to be replaced, will the residential traffic be rerouted around the other, the new...
We will probably be, hopefully we'll have the residential campus bit out around the time that these are done, so everyone will still be using these commercial scales at that time.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy. And next up, we have Isaac Smith from the Medina County Park District. Good morning, Isaac.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good.
So I'm here to request a resolution of support for the acquisition of 15 acres through the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund. This property is located on Medina Line Road right along the Wolf Creek.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Isaac, can you give us just a little bit of explanation of how this connects into the existing park?
So this is directly south across the railroad tracks from Greenleaf Park on Medina Line Road. It's also adjacent to the east from some property we own already on the southern side of the railroad tracks. It's also about a mile to the east from the Brendel property, which is where Sharon Nature Preserver is working on being developed, and it's part of our previous discussions with the recovery funds that we're looking to do for restoration with the trail and the sewer line along there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We got it. We'll move into our department updates, and we have one this morning, Laura Toth from the Office for Older Adults.
Good morning.
Good morning, Laura.
I'm happy to report that last Friday, we had just a wonderful outdoor event. Our luau on the lawn brought over 150 seniors, enjoyed a pulled chicken lunch. Island Jeff played the steel drums for entertainment, and we had Richardson's on hand for farmer's market. There was even a Kona ice machine, so brought to us by Devoted Health, which gave everyone the opportunity for some refreshment. The weather was perfect, so that, I mean, it was just gorgeous last Friday, and the numbers exceeded our expectations. It was apparent to me that so many seniors were just anxious to get out and participate. This is a beautiful day, a beautiful outdoor event, and especially our large-scale, you know, fun events, people are ready to go, so it was very exciting. I'm looking forward to some things we do over the winter and then next spring. So I wanted to report back on that quick. This coming Monday, September 20th, Office for Older Adults will officially reorganize and welcome the Adult Protective Services Unit. We're happy to bring the experienced APS workers Shelley Nagy and Stacy Webb over from JFS, and we've hired just a great dynamic APS supervisor, Luella Gilbert, who's here observing today. She comes to us with varied experience, working at Boards of D.D., and most recently, working for Child Protective Services. This move was coordinated by our office, Job and Family Services, and the Prosecutor's Office, and we all worked together. We all had a vision of bringing all the senior services possible in Medina County under one umbrella, and I'm proud of the groundwork that's been laid to make this vision happen. I mean, we really, I think, all have done a good job. We'll begin collecting data and reporting Adult Protective Services data in the months ahead, and this unit further adds to our mission of keeping older adults and seniors with disabilities independent in the community, so we're really happy and excited about it. Last week, saw the receipt of our Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging Grant application. This grant is a major source of funding for our different meal services outreach workers and our Aging and Disability Resource Center, and it totals somewhere, it's usually over $300,000, so it's quite a significant amount for us. I'm working furiously to complete the application and hope to have it for your review and signature next week. Last week, also saw the city of Wadsworth contract with Medina Creative Living to open the Suprema Cafe, which has been closed since March of 2020. We're excited to see what Medina Creative Living has to offer for the cafe, and they've committed to continuing the restaurant voucher program. Medina Creative Living plans to reopen the cafe in October, and we hope to reinstate the voucher program in December or absolutely January 1st at the latest, so we'll get that back on track.
Awesome.
So I'm excited to see what kind of offerings they'll have. I wanted to pass out our meal numbers.
Can I have an operation similar to what they have over on Reagan Parkway or whatever that is back by Home Depot?
The Grand Roastery.
Yeah. They have a bistro over there.
Yes.
Right.
So they have an operating bistro over there. In my mind, I haven't met with Diane De Pasquale Hager yet, but in my mind, it's going to be that and kind of in combination with what the cafe was, some kind of in-between, so we'll see what they have. We have certain nutrition requirements for the voucher program and things of that nature. For example, I mean, nothing necessarily, but for example, there has to be a dairy. They have to be offered milk with every lunch. Well, that's not necessarily what's going on now, but it's something that they're willing to adapt to.
So hours of operation will be primarily the weekday?
Weekday, yeah. Breakfast and lunch operation in the weekday, which is what Windfall Industries, who had the contract previously, that's how they operated it as well.
Yeah.
I know. That's good news.
It is. Great.
Finally, I'm continuing to keep an eye on our home-delivered meal numbers. That's kind of what I handed out to you. You can see they've gone down a little bit through July, but we should see some dynamic decreases in August. I don't get my data until the 10th of the month, so I wasn't able to get it turned around so we could have August data to look at. It is nice to see over on the right side that finally we've started congregate meals, and we had 176 congregate meals served in July, so that's a good sign. We currently have over 170 consumer receiving home-delivered meals. This number's up, about 30 clients from our pre-COVID days, and this forces us to run seven delivery routes where before we were only running six. We're lucky to have adequate driving staff to cover these routes, but I just have to continue to analyze our, these numbers. It's been steady at that 170 number since we decreased in July, so all 170 of those clients meet the pure criteria of being homebound in order to receive the meal. So I just have to keep analyzing. At some point, I'm going to have to make a decision. We're going to have seven permanent routes, and then the intermittents after that, if that number continues to be high. We don't like to see drivers serve over, drive over, you know, about 25 is our limit with the meals to be hot and in that lunch timeframe. So I just wanted to report, we're still working on it. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Well, I will be on vacation, so I'm taking a month off from my report if that's okay, but I was looking, I won't be back till November 9th. Can you believe it? Two months, it's November 9th. I couldn't believe it, but I thank you so much.
Enjoy.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Very nice report. Thank you. We have one notice here of a liquor permit filing. This is a stock transfer for RCE Midway Tavern, Inc., DBA Midway Tavern, located at 9977 Lafayette Road, Harrisville Township, West Illinois, Ohio. We will not be requesting a hearing on this matter. We'll move into public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address this this morning? Hearing none. We'll move into discussion. Scott, do you have a couple of things?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, update on the courthouse. So all the footers are installed, the elevator foundations are installed, waterproofed and backfilled, and they are currently installing all the water lines, the sewer lines, drainage, and they're cutting the conduits for fiber to go into the building. So again, we continue to move along. We spent approximately $600,000 today. We've paid, we've paid, we've received two invoices from Gilbame, totaling right around $600,000. The only thing that I have for discussion is, we received a letter from Cleveland Communications. They're the ones that currently manage and maintain our radio system for the Sheriff's Department, and as you know, MARCS, which is the state system, has been attempting to replace the Harris system. I know we currently have about $2.8 million in the Harris system. We still owe about a million dollars in debt on that system, and the reason why is for interoperability, and I know that Cleveland Communications has repeatedly indicated that there is a solution for interoperability, which would allow our system to talk with the MARCS system, and we've been attempting to get the state to move in that direction because there are other communities that have the Harris system and have other radio systems other than MARCS, but the state is somewhat hesitant to do that. Obviously, they have a very large investment in MARCS, and the more communities that they can get onto the MARCS system, the more revenue they generate to help pay for the cost of the system. So Allen Close, who's the president of Cleveland Communications, is asking those communities that are currently not in MARCS to send a letter of support to the state, really encouraging them to purchase this interoperability subsystem interface that would allow the different radio systems to communicate. I did send, I copied each of you on a copy of this letter. I also sent a copy to Sheriff Grace. Sheriff Grace had had a comment that he thought there was some verbiage in the letter that maybe was too harsh, and so, and I think I know, which I think he's talking about, the predatory sales effort by MARCS. I think that sentence needs to be taken out, but I think if we kind of tailor this, and if I, if you allow me to work with Sheriff Grace, I mean, we can tailor this and we can get a letter prepared, and if you're willing to sign it and send it to the state, I think we need to make a decision fairly soon on what we want to do, and because right now we've got, there's a lot of uncertainty.
Who are we sending it to?
This would be sent to the legislature. I can't remember which senator it was, it was one of the senators at the state level. It was in the email, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I would think it would go to those folks and also maybe even the Department of Public Safety that operates MARCS and any other interested connected party. You know, my question, Scott, is it says that in the first paragraph that we have formed this Ohio Public Safety Alliance Network. Have we? I mean, I don't know that we have not...
Yeah, you have not been there. My understanding is that Sheriff Grace has attended the meeting that they held.
So is he a, I guess, quote unquote, member of that organization?
Yes. So I think it'd be...
So he's representing the county in this organization?
Yes. I think it'd be appropriate for all four of you to sign it, both the three Commissioners and the Sheriff, if we decide to move in that direction. We can discuss it further, but I wanted to bring this to your attention. I know that Allen had brought this, had sent an email, I think several weeks ago, and I think we need to at least respond to him that yes, we're going to do something or we're not going to do something.
I know. I shared this letter with Representative Sharon Ray, and as you know, she had tried getting funding in the budget that was going through for this very thing. So she is supportive, obviously, of the concept, and I think agrees that we ought to be continuing to lobby for this, just because of the, I'll say the aggressive, I won't use the word predatory, but we'll just say the aggressive nature of MARCS and monopolistic approach, and I really do believe that those systems like ours, that we ought to be pursuing likewise, if there's going to be funding for MARCS likewise, there ought to be some state support for this interoperability component, and I think that's the best argument we can make is to our legislators as well as Department of Safety and even the Governor's Office on this issue.
I'm in agreement that Scott should continue to work with the letter with Sheriff Grace.
Well, I would think that, first off, that Sheriff Grace needs to make a decision, I think, on what system best suits the needs of the county, and so far, I have not heard him do that. They've had a number of meetings with MARCS to talk to them about, you know, what the cost of going onto MARCS would be and particularly what the service coverage would be across the county.
And will MARCS do anything about our debt and what we've already paid?
No.
Okay.
And the other issue is, at least the first go-round, you know, it was something in the neighborhood. It was several million dollars for them to build towers and do certain things, and they sort of alluded to the fact that the county would be responsible for that, and we said no.
Yet the most cost-effective way to deal with this is the interoperability.
Absolutely.
Which is possible at a lot lower cost for the entities such as ours to actually have that capability of interfacing with MARCS, and understand there are performance issues with MARCS even within our own county or even with the adjoining county. We had an incident over at the 42 Dragway, as I understand, a number of months ago, where MARCS radios were inoperable. They weren't, our radios worked fine, if I recall correctly.
I believe that's correct.
And I think that says a lot for the system, that each of us, I think there are certain geographies and topographies, investments have already made, and it's unfortunate the state is, has this prejudice or bias against anybody that's not affiliated with the MARCS system. This would be a way, like I said, cost-effective way to actually kind of make sure that there's much more of a level playing field here when it comes to, and where Sheriff Grace is at, I remember the, it was the Sheriff Grace that made the commitment in terms of the dollars of the commitment for that radio system you have. The Board of Commissioners did. I wasn't here then, but you, how much do we still owe?
A million. A million dollars. Yeah.
So no offense to Sheriff Grace, I mean, he has an opinion, which I think we should value, but likewise, the Board of Commissioners have responsibility here as well as an investment that has to be protected.
Okay. I will, I know I left a message with Sheriff Grace, so I'll wait his return call.
To be clear, so you want to wait for the letter till the sheriff has decided which system he wants, or are we going forward with the letter for interoperability?
I'm okay with, this letter is a bit lopsided, I would say, in more respects than just that one paragraph, but, or that one sentence. I think it's worthwhile to ask them, and, because I think the solution for the ISI is somewhere on a million or a million and a half dollars.
Yeah, depending on who you talk to, one says a million, one says 1.8.
Right. So, you know, there is a cost to implementing that, that hopefully the state would pick up because it would, you know, there's a number of counties and subdivisions within various counties that are on the Harris system, and it would benefit all of them across the state, so there is a benefit to that. You know, MARCS was supposed to come back to us a month ago with a proposal for what it would cost to convert to county, and just so that we had some sort of comparison. There was some indication that they could utilize perhaps some of the infrastructure that we already have, so that million dollars that we have outstanding wouldn't necessarily be a sunk cost. So at any rate, from a service standpoint, providing a service to the citizens and residents of Medina County, I'm not biased one way or the other. We just need to have radio coverage, and whatever is the best way of doing that is, and most cost-effective way of doing it, is where I'm at. So I think that squarely lies within the sheriff's purview of at least making a recommendation to the board of where he's at and what he thinks is going to be the best system from an interoperability standpoint. That's where I'm at. I don't have a preference...
Sounds like the county made the decision a couple of years ago, though.
True, but circumstances have changed significantly since then, because one of the reasons why they went with the Harris system is because of the fire departments, and they did not have the resources to convert their systems over to the MARCS system, and so there were compromises or decisions made that based on the circumstances back then that made sense that don't exist today because these, I think all the fire departments in Medina County have gotten grants from the state, Fire MarCS's office, to convert to MARCS.
And how many police departments do we have on Harris versus MARCS?
I don't know the exact number, but there's a split.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a systemic issue, and I just...
Well, I agree. Well, the state has continued to subsidize over the last number of years, and I was a part of that as the legislature, of the MARCS radio system because the public safety was pushing for it.
Right.
And so I imagine the alternate has eroded, and, but there are a number of counties that have maintained that investment and have seen that it actually has some benefits with that, that system. So if the solution is, that I know it undermines maybe the monopoly for the MARCS system, and for those that want to maintain it, at least for the short, for that period of time until people transition, if they all want to transition to MARCS, and if the state wants to take over those ongoing monthly costs for MARCS, right now, they subsidize portions of that, then basically interoperability seems like the most cost-effective way to do that, at least for the time being, until you develop another plan of a statewide system that at least deals with some of those issues that the Harris system seems to be able to deal adequately with. And hopefully the state can then figure out if they're going to, if they're going to basically subsidize everybody then.
So we okay with sending a modified letter, but just asking them to explore the interoperability in the ISI?
Yes.
Okay. I'll wait for Sheriff Grace's phone call, and we'll get with him some time, probably end of this week or next if he has time, and we'll work on this together, and, okay? Thank you.
Can I bring up some issues when Scott is here?
Sure.
Because it involves Scott. He and I have been, had some conversations, this is with Main Street Medina. Matt Weiderholt had a couple of months approached us with an idea of moving the war bond building that's over in the hospital, Medina Hospital, closer to the square and put it on public property. Originally had been built over on the square, was in place, obviously during World War II. Actually, with a lot of research done by Matt and taking a look, we had, Abbott and Costello there, actually, one of the few places they stopped in 1942, was there in a square. 10,000 people came. I mean, it was supposed to be awesome, so there's, the idea is kind of bringing it so the people can see it better there and more affiliated. The question comes down to is what public property would be appropriate and who would take care of the building? Originally, they had approached us of the garden over here, but there are all the alternatives I would like of the board of us.
I think there's room for it over there by the garden. There's a whole area that's still just grass.
There is.
Yeah.
And it's making sure that you have public access to it.
Right.
And I think it'd be a great stop next, we are now approaching the 80th anniversary of not only Pearl Harbor, but also the World War II, and one spirits of the past and some kind of events that might commemorate, and can at least be more in a public place that people can see it.
Who actually owns it?
It actually, the hospital acquired it. The history of it, it went to a private residence. They used it as a shed. Very few of these still are in existence. Many communities, because they're basically just a basic shed, movable, no real foundation, and they get moved hither and there yon. It was preserved, and I know, Scott, you said you had a project, were you...
Yeah, I painted it years ago, years and years and years ago.
So it kind of, at least the hospital took custody of it. They have property, they're willing to deed it over. The question is, where's the best place for it? Who's going to have the commitment of long-term maintenance for that? And it is, since they're very rare, most of them have been demolished and destroyed, and since this does have some notoriety and some success, Medina County was one of the top, I'll say, top counties in success of the war bond effort in 1942 and 1943, it might be nice to have that kind of piece of history closer where people can see it. If it, all right, but you two, I think Scott can continue to negotiate with Matt Weiderholt and with the other parties as to the best place for it, and as well as eventually have to commit who's going to take responsibility for it.
Well, and to approach the hospital.
Well, there it happens. Matt has already worked out with the hospital. They're willing to donate it. Yeah, transfer it over. So no, he, Main Street Medina has already worked this out. Now they're just trying to reach an agreement as to where the best place is. We have differences of opinion, I guess, yeah, as well as...
They have a lot of land in the new historical society over there on Prospect. Do you think that they would want it for their yard?
Well, they prob, no, actually, they want it closer to the square where it used to be. They want to put it on the square, which originally was between the fountain and where the gun is, and so that probably wouldn't be the best, but they'd like something at least fairly close. This used to be the high school building. There was even newspaper reports about how great the high school classes did in competition for raising money for the war bonds, so somewhere even close to, but the county owns these, a number of these properties, and if it's all right, we would have Scott continue to, I guess, work with them and negotiate and kind of work through it.
I think it would be nice to kind of require that and have it as a focal point. I just don't know where to put it.
I, yeah, my opinion is, you've got the 1841 courthouse, then 1869 courthouse, and you've got that area kind of between them. I think it should go right there. There's room for it there. It's on the square. It's accessible. You could put up some kind of...
Even a plaque.
A plaque or something, and...
They're increasingly rare because they were temporary, temporary only for the sale of the war bonds, but obviously, at the time, we were all united after World War II, during World War II, everybody came together, and Medina was quite successful in raising money for the war efforts.
Scott, would, do we have anybody that could Photoshop that in? Take a picture of the courthouse, take a picture of the building?
Brian.
I'm sure Brian could do that.
I mean, I would like to see what...
What that looks like?
Because it, and as I visualize it in my head, it just doesn't seem to... And and as I visualize it in my head, it it just doesn't seem to fit there.
Yeah, my my concern is if you put in the garden, because the garden's fenced in, it'd be really hard to see, and people wouldn't, people really wouldn't be able to see it.
No, not in the garden, there's a lawn outside.
Oh, outside of the garden, okay.
There's a decent sized lawn.
Yeah, there is a decent sized area.
It needs to be on on a concrete pad or at least separate from the ground so that at least the wood.
Yeah, no, in the gardens, no.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if it's all right with you, we'll have Scott continue to work with you on this.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
All right, and I'll send you the Matt, like I said, Matt did a lot more, I did a little bit preliminary research, and he did a whole lot more on on those buildings. So, I'll make sure you get that.
Okay, thank you.
Super.
All right, thanks, Scott. Amy, do you have anything?
I could talk about the COVID sick time if you're ready.
So, we previously had some conversations, just some informal conversations about the COVID continued pandemic activity and the need for some staff members to take time off. You've heard some staff members have kids that have received notices that they are, you know, testing positive and having to stay home and so forth. So we revisited the policy from last year on, just to present for your consideration for a paid COVID time off, if we were to allot 10 days or an 80-hour, you know, work period, but we would create a form very similar to the form that had been followed last year, where the individual would have to list the reason for leave, they'd be able to provide a notification whether they received a letter from the school or some other kind of positive notification that would suggest they need to stay home for a period of time for themselves or for their child who's in school. And then, once exhausted, any additional time off needed for subsequent exposures or times off would come off their sick bank or other accrued.
So this would be 80 additional hours if needed for COVID-related illness for 2021?
It could be for 2021, or if you wanted to consider it to coincide with, for example, the flu season to carry into the beginning of next year, you know, that usually runs through the end of March, but we had talked about potentially setting aside a little pot of money from the ARP dollars in order to cover this expense. So if we wanted to start with a set amount of money, we could continue to update you and draw off that amount depending on applicability.
Yeah, we really don't know how long this is going to last.
Right, Sarah.
So, I I guess I would agree that we ought to just allocate a certain amount of money and then revisit it if if and when it ever gets depleted. And I, you know, I I don't know how we will define the end date of the program of when COVID eventually ends.
I would, my my preference would be to go ahead and create it for to the end of this year, and then when we adopt our budget, decide on on if we're going to extend it further and for how long. We'll know a whole lot more how this this phase of COVID. I know I've been reading some articles about talking about even a fourth wave or whatever.
Well, that's that's what I'm saying, 80 hours through 2021 and then revisit.
And we revisit for as part of our budget and so forth.
Okay, I'm good with that, too.
At least put a end date, yeah, the rest of the year. We've got the funds, the ARP's qualified for that little little, and then, of course, during our whole discussions here, when we started doing hearings in October and November, and we can kind of consider it by then as to where we're going to be. We'll know a lot more, I'm sure, in the next two months than we do right now.
Right.
And you'll contact the elected department heads?
Right, so with this agreement, we'll go ahead and update the form. Holly can distribute that then with her team to all, and we can set something up through Kronos then to make that makes it easy for tracking, if we can reuse one of the prior codes, or if we need to make an additional amendment just to track it through the system.
And will will we need a resolution for next week on this, then?
We could, do we need?
Yeah, we probably should.
So we'll get everything put together then and formally present on Tuesday next week.
Yeah, because we did a resolution during the first phase of COVID, if I recall correctly, to establish this program, so I think I think we ought to do another one.
And we'll follow suit.
These are ARP lines, so you'll set this aside, just like you've done the prior the prior ARP commitments.
Okay, yep.
So as long as we're talking about ARP.
I would like to talk about ARP.
Do you need me to stay up here, Commissioner? Or may I sit down?
I don't know, I have something to.
No, I don't think so.
Ma, okay.
So, as I recall, we were going to talk about ARP today, but we're going to push that back.
Oh, I had a smaller ARP thing. You're going for the larger discussion.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
So, so we're we're waiting for some programs to be updated and for some additional information on on certain programs. So do we want to set another target date for when we will begin evaluating and have our little score sheets in? Because I've not done any score sheet because I.
Neither have I, because we've had a number, we know updates coming with some of the proposals, and I think they're substantive, they're very important. Likewise, we're not in a hurry to spend all this money down, nor are we need to. And the value of scoring is is seeing, I see the value of scoring less and less for where we've got an agreement and we know we want to proceed with some of these, it's just a matter of discussing how much. But I know we also have projects that need to make make some decisions on.
Right.
We can't wait too long.
And I I, like you said, we do have some things, and and we already have spent some money, so as we make a few decisions and maybe even, you know, some minor ones today, I'd also like to know the the dollar amount that we're scoring for this year and to know what we've already spent and, you know, which we don't really have, we just kind of have a guesstimate, but I'd like to know the actual dollar amount that we're going to score.
Okay, so, to go back to our prior conversation about the sick leave, do we have a figure in mind of how much we want to set aside for that? Amy, do we know how much was was allocated and spent in the first round? Any idea what those numbers look like?
Well, that was a much larger number than I think you may want to set aside. That was somewhere to the tune of $300,000, but a large chunk of that was administrative paid leave because at that time we were under the stay-at-home order. There were only about 2,700 hours of true COVID sick time that were a part of that overall $300,000. So if we wanted to set aside, you know, for example, $100,000, I think that would be very generous in terms of having that allocated.
Okay, so you good for that?
Sure.
And this is what I mean by the little dollar amounts.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Right.
So, so you want to put that in the mix and and in the matrix so we know what's left over?
Certainly, that way you'll have a tally of what's been allocated and what remains.
I do have another minor one.
So you don't get leaving.
Well, we have to redo the resolution for the.
Click share.
Click share program because JFF was left off the resolution, so the resolution has to be redone anyway. We got notification from the county auditor. They really, the last year, have been doing board of revisions almost exclusively remotely when you look at the percentage of their meetings. So considering that board of revisions, they really are going remote, since we have to redo the resolution, are you guys okay with adding the auditor's office to that list and for the their BOR meetings, especially during the flu season, if they have to continue to do it remotely?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
I'm good with that, too. So, when you redo the allocation, if you could add the auditor and the cost for the auditor on that, too?
I can do that. JFS was actually included in the original $116,000 allocation, we just neglected to list them out individually. So we'll go ahead and do that, but then add the auditor's amount to that 116 to increase it by that differential. And I did attend a meeting.
Scott, each one of those costs what, like 10 grand? Is that in the ballpark?
I think it was eight, maybe. I don't know.
Hey, Gary, I think the one that was left on election board, election board, I spoke to this one.
Oh, is Board of Elections not JFS? Okay.
Yeah, and I think theirs was like 6,000 and 7,000.
Right.
And I think the auditors would be right around there also, because this is a small conference room.
Now, they're usually.
I think JFS, I think theirs goes upwards of like 30,000, because they have a small conference room and they had a very large, like, trading room that they were going to be outfitting.
Okay.
And then just one last piece. I attended a conference last week that OBM put on to talk about the various utilization options for the ARP dollars, and they referenced that they do expect there will be changes in the final rule based on comments that they had received or the Fed, the federal government had received on the interim final rule, but their expectation on that publishing of the final rule is not till closer to the end of the year.
Wow.
So.
But there's some areas that are more defined than others that we know.
Correct.
Just because of the language that was adopted by Congress, correct, when it comes to broadband, there's wider discretion than there is for, let's say.
Water sewer.
Yeah, first, or first, yeah, and and first responder pay and all those kind of things.
Which, to date, really, your focus has been on, those ones that have been more clear-cut.
Right.
For these early decisions.
Yeah, yeah, and I think I think that that impacts some of the scoring considerations as well, does it not?
It may.
Yeah, okay.
So while we're on our, did you want to talk or start the conversation about fiber?
Okay, sure.
So, I know that over the last couple of weeks, I believe Commissioner Hambley met with LMRE and Medina County Fiber, and there was some discussion on kind of a partnership between the two of them, and I believe that LMRE has or is amending their request and has had Medina Fiber. So Medina Fiber is asking for, originally, they were asking for about, I think, 4 million. And that has now increased depending on the get-ready costs on the polls. It could be anywhere from, I believe, 7 million to 11 million dollars with about 5.5 required this year, and then about 1 and 1/2 next year is the expectation. So the question is, is can we go ahead and, I guess, allocate the 5.5 for Medina Fiber to continue running middle mile in areas that are not served? And if we can, if we can just go ahead and include that, I guess, on a resolution when we do the conferencing equipment and the.
But you're talking just the 5.5 for this year.
Just the 5.5 this year, yes. So I believe that that still allows about 10, close to $10 million that can be allocated and scored.
Scott, when when will we have a definitive proposal? Because we had, we had a presentation by LMRE, and we had a presentation by Medina Fiber. When, and so we're going to sort of kind of combine the two, but when when will we have or when will the Port Authority have a a hard proposal from LMRE about where their position is and when where they're going to, where they're going to stand on the make ready?
I I don't know. I think the Ed had to go to the board and get approval for some things, but I think once that's done, I'm sure there, I'm sure there'll be some kind of an agreement that will be written or drawn up and entered into.
But I guess, when, what's, do we know what the timeline is for their their action?
I know, Dave.
So the NDAs were just signed yesterday, and the fiber count has been submitted from lit communities over LMRE. So I would say probably four to five weeks yet in order to, what what they're going to do is they're going to balance the fair market value of the fiber LMRE that they will be receiving from the bill against an average of $700 per pole of make ready. If that value of the fiber exceeds the $700 per pole kind of number of poles, then there will be no cost whatsoever to lit communities or to the project, in which case then the 11 million dollars total to build LMRE and the Guilford Township project reduces by about $3 million to an $8 million.
So is LMRE and Guilford Township as well?
No, but what we did is, if you remember, our first proposal was to do Guilford Township, Hardmont Bill.
Part of Lodi.
And and Crager Township. That was the first proposal.
Wasn't there, wasn't there two legs in in the Lodi area?
There were then three industrial parks, which were very small, about 200,000 or 3 million. That was Lodi, Medina Industrial, and then Industrial up at 94, Insurance Center. So what we've done now is, because we have been able to work a deal with LMRE, we have rewritten a submission, version two, which asks for $11 million over two years, five and a half each, with investors bringing $11 million. However, if we find out from LMRE that there will be no make ready because the value of fiber they are receiving exceeds that or equals that, then the second year, that five and a half million could be as low as a 1.5 million dollar ask. But we really, again, won't know that until about four or five weeks.
The question for us is, is obviously, our support for moving forward with this, setting at least the money aside from the ARP dollars sufficient to do the project, and if this comes at a lower cost, we can always put that back in the pool for scoring, because we still have about a couple of years that we can use this money. So I guess I, in terms of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Two things for me, Amy says the final rules will not come to the end of the year. We know that broadband is a slam dunk.
Correct.
But more importantly, that is really an underserved area of our community, and as flu season and the COVID numbers increase, the likelihood of some of our children having to quarantine and stay home and not have good internet for school really concerns me that that underserved area, they need to have better better equipment to be able to stay at home and do school.
Yeah.
This is a long-term play, though, because it won't be done for quite some time, but I I agree, we.
Well, the quicker.
Part of the benefit of of the the money is is to underserved, underserved areas, and and this project would do that.
Right.
My concern is, is I I'm okay with this in principle, but I would hesitate at this point in time to actually allocate the money until we know specifically what LMRE's position is.
Well, can't we, like we did with our, well, I'll just say for our sick time, we always set the money aside and we'll draw down on it as we need, can we not adopt the same principle on this one, where we set the money aside for this, knowing that we're going to have at that that eventual cost, at least some portion of it? And then, of course, what we don't end up spending, we'll spend on the other projects that we that we'll have pending over the next year or two. So at least we're sending the clear signal, this is important enough for us to fund. This was the purpose of this ARP money was to, you're right, it's a slam dunk, and and we are committed to working with them, and just set that aside, it'll be contingent on other further decisions and the negotiations of LMRE. At this point, we can go ahead and proceed and start scoring our other projects.
So we'd need a resolution.
To set aside.
To set aside.
Yeah, at least that's what I would propose. Does that seem reasonable or not?
I would do a soft set aside.
Okay, so, okay, so.
Because I I don't want to make a commitment to, a firm commitment to a project that we don't have a firm commitment back from.
Can we, can we push LMRE to hurry up on their proposal?
Just so you know, the five and a half million for this year is five and a half million. That dollar amount is not going to be reduced.
It's the second year.
It's the second year passed.
Yeah.
So, we we are, we have already put together our build schedule, which will take 24 months to build out the LMRE and the Guilford Township east to south.
The densification project.
The densification project. Also increasing from 2,100 homes served to 300 homes served.
And Dave, those are predominantly the incremental amount are the homes on the west side of the county from Spencer down toward Homer Township, Beninette area.
Exactly, take Columbia Road, which is where our backbone is today, coming out of Lodi, ended up, take to the west of that, Yorktown, Spencer, Homer, everything that goes to the west and southwest all the way down to Lodi to the bottom of the county. They'll hit every home, because that's the requirement by LMRE that they get two fibers that they will have to hit every single home. That's to position themselves for the smart grid technology by years.
So Dave, would we have the ability, because LMRE is, Lorraine, to go into other counties?
We are actually talking to them. Lit Communities has two NDAs already signed with the remaining three sections. I don't know where our play would be, there might be something in it, but at least our entity, Medina Fiber, definitely would build through there. The investors are actually looking at building all the way up into the Toledo area. This would be a first step to come across and up into Toledo and that part of the city.
I guess, to make it clear, obviously, provides, it is clear that this money can for the underserved areas providing broadband. Secondly, make it clear that this, that eventually the county will be paid back for this investment, correct?
It's a six to eight-year payback based on the make ready.
So, I mean, just those two, I guess, those two components, at least in my mind, validates why we ought to be setting aside.
Have we found yet, are we legally allowed to be paid back for art money? Are we legally allowed to be paid back for ARP money? We are? Okay.
Yes.
So what I would recommend is, Amy can go ahead and put together, I guess, a list of the projects that have already been approved. Any set asides that we have come up with a total amount, I guess, available for scoring for this year, which is going to be right around $10 million. You can score and then, for that $10 million, and then if for some reason that 5.5 falls through, you could throw that into the mix for next year or later, beginning of next year. Because, again, we're really in no hurry to spend the money, but there are projects out there that we need to get started and have some urgency to them.
And Skip Sipos asked, we had the Housing Network last week, you might see the report, and they've got that project, for that permanent supportive housing project. And since with the grant funding, he does need an answer fairly soon. So I'm hopeful...
Fairly soon, like, could we do October 15th? Like, give us another month to really analyze these and get a final number? Or is that too late for them?
Do we really need to wait that long for some of those? I mean, we already said, go ahead with the number, and I guess, yeah.
We had a scoring matrix that we were going to look at all these and rank them or whatever, and now we're kind of tossing that out the window.
Well, that's why I've asked, what is the value of the scoring matrix? We keep putting a lot of these off book or not scoring anyway. So at this point, this is more of like a budget than it is...
All right, well, October 1st, give us two, a couple more weeks?
Yes.
Is that better?
I would hope that we can do it by the end of the month.
Okay.
I'd like this.
I'd like the final number, though, after all the set asides.
Well, I think some projects need it. We've got the Granger Township Homeowners Association one.
Right.
Granger Township is waiting to see what we're going to do. And so there's that component of it. We have to discuss, you know, how much or what we're going to do.
So how about if we set a target for having our scoring done by October 5th?
October...
Well, I take that back. Let's have our discussion on October 5th.
Okay.
So Amy, how much time do you need to get these things and tabulate them all?
If you got ours by October 1st, could they be tab, oh, that's the weekend, then?
Yeah, you don't mind working Saturdays and Sundays, do you?
I can, or we like them whenever you're, you know, fix the end of the prior week, and that gives me, you know, that Friday and perhaps Monday to return those to you, I can make them.
Okay, so how about if we shoot for September 29th?
September 29th.
Okay.
For scoring.
And we're getting a number, and we're okay with the number minus the five and a half?
Yes. Yes.
In principle, yes.
In principle.
Well, a soft set aside.
Soft set aside, there you go.
A soft set aside, all right. But I think unanimous, we have unanimous support that money can be used for broadband, unanimous support that we need to move forward, and as soon as the details can be worked out...
With LMRE.
With LMRE and the partners, that we do that.
Right.
Okay.
Except if we work it out.
Yes, well, of course, yeah.
And I will, if I may, just email you now, you know, just the summary of the projects already allocated with that total.
And the ones we added today.
Yes, please. Yes, right. That will help us.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we can let Skip Sipos know about the...
The date.
The date, for at least for that particular project. Right, okay.
Okay. Amy, do you have anything else?
I do now.
Dave, do you have anything else you want to say?
I'm good, thanks.
John?
We want to bring up Housing Network, meaning we met, as you might have seen, last week, the consultant came in, provided the report. They're continuing to work on a proposal for that. And in conversations with Skip, as well as Phil Titterington, who have been paying for the consultant, the next phase of the planning, they were wondering if the $100,000 that was set aside by the last budget, the state budget, for this homeless shelter could be used for those planning purposes. And in communication with Sharon Ray, right now, we're working out the details to acquire that. We are the recipient of that, so we'll have to take those actions to, but I think then we'll have further discussion as to how to do that for that continuing support in the planning. They're right now engaged in a survey of a lot of providers, getting an idea of the real needs out there in terms of providing the support, as well as the partnerships that are possible for this, especially the supportive services wrapped around whatever shelters are, would be constructive. Likewise, Terry Greis attended as well to deal with the former jail population that who has also housing needs. So I think these are all part of that discussion, and the consultant would be the one to help identify those and develop a plan. But I think the idea is those costs could come out of that $100,000 that the commissioners perceive for the homeless shelter.
Okay.
Any else?
No.
Have you heard anything at the state level about the public meetings and the, go back to them? Is there any bill pending?
Well, there is a bill pending, a bill, they've already had hearings. As you know, the House tried to put an extension in the budget, and the Senate rejected that. I know that we're having a CCA board meeting this week, probably talking about that. And I know there's been a big push by the various associations to resume that, given what's been going on. Some entities, limited entities, can do that. We know the Port Authority or the Economic Development Corporation, Dan. And also, some of the boards of trustees and the colleges can do it. But unfortunately, general purpose governments have not been able to do it. There are some cities, because of ruling by law directors under home rule, they apparently, once they declared emergency, have been able to do some of these, which, of course, counties don't have. And so I think, but a lot of local governments are pushing to write this. It's basically a big push by the end of this year to, or at least when they get back there. House session was canceled this week, Senate's doing some hearings. So I think, well, like I said, I'll let you know on Friday what the CCO, what our people are saying as to where that's going. But a lot of them have been more focused on other issues like redistricting and...
Other important things.
Yeah, the vaccinations.
So do you think it would be of any benefit for us to do any kind of a resolution and send it down to the State House and say, hey, we would very much support?
Well, our current reps know that.
Yeah, well, but the rest of them don't.
Yeah, well, I've heard tip it out.
And if CCAO even is going to take a policy position...
Oh, they are, yeah.
Maybe we could even echo that policy position. Because I think it would be a good thing to have.
I agree.
On a permanent basis.
I absolutely agree. I totally agree that on a permanent basis, there ought to be some, and the concern is what guardrails are in place to make sure it's not abused. But I think generally, the public's been better informed because of the ability and actually attendance in a lot of public entities is actually better during then than afterwards because it was easier to get on, be on Zoom, everybody could see it or be on a kind of platform. And then, now that they're in person, you have conflicts with schedule.
Well, and there's some boards and commissions, I felt that the attendance was better on Zoom.
Yeah, it was. Exactly right. Exactly. And I know in terms of, like, some of the planning conditions, Greg Onx from Brunswick said that as much, that it was great ability for them to have experts come in there with and schedule it when they had the ability to do that.
Right. And it reduces a lot of conflicts. You don't have to travel for a half hour or an hour to get someplace, you can be more places.
Exactly right. So, yeah, well, I'll give you an answer to that after Friday, after the board meeting.
Very good.
Okay.
Do you have anything? I just have one thing. NOACA met Friday, the board meeting, and a couple of things just of import. Representative Gibbs has asked for an earmark for 3.2 million dollars to do a roundabout at River Sticks and 162. That's on the NOACA slate, and they're basically good with it if the money comes through. So there's a possibility that we may have another roundabout in Medina County. They also talked about a comprehensive economic development program that would be a coalescence of all the economic development programs throughout the five-county region. They need to have this kind of a program in place to access about $3 billion in federal economic development funds. So it's something that they want to get in place and place relatively quickly to access those funds. And their sensible push is to connect transportation to economic development. The question is, and I've talked to Bethany Dantler, is will there be any scope creep and will they try to discourage economic development in one area to the benefit of economic development in another area for any number of transportation-related reasons? So that remains to be seen. Those were the important points that came out of that meeting. They also had the annual meeting, which was just basically a recap of the year and the long-range plan that we've gone over with the fine two.
Did the modification of facility planning area that was tabled, the prior meeting, did that come back?
It did not. There were like three or four other FPA amendments, mostly in Lorraine County, that were voted on and approved.
Okay, so that one wasn't removed from the table, then?
Well, it's still tabled.
It's still tabled.
It was not removed from the table, correct? So, yeah, it's still hanging up there. That's all I have. Ron, did you have anything?
No.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Have a great week. We'll see you next week.